Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the March 22nd, 2025 Michigan City Area Schools Board of Trustees Meeting. If you could please stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is Record of the Role. Ms. D, all board members are present. Next, the mission statement.
We are a diverse community of families, students, and staff who take pride in our schools, contribute positively to society, and prepare students for lifelong success.
Thank you. Before we go on to the public forum, I do have to request a motion from the board. There are two items that we need to add to the agenda. One, to the consent agenda, being an affirmation of no fine legal policy violation as stated in an independent investigator's report. That'll be number seven on the consent agenda. And in the business item, it'll be number four, will be approval of early literacy grant. Do have a motion?
Move to approve?
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing or further discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? That passes. Thank you. Now, we're on to public forum. There is a lot of people... Hold on, Tommy. Let me get through my spiel, bro. You can get on that one if you have a chance. We have a lot of people today. We have a lot of stuff to do today. Public forum's not open yet. Let me say my spiel first, Tommy. It's a different meeting. We have a lot of people here today, so please conform to the time constraints that we have on our public forum. Please limit your comments to three minutes. There will be no direct interaction with the board, discussion of personnel issues, or direct or indirect verbal attacks of staff or the administration. Public forum is now open.
This is Tommy Kalavich from 1316 Ohio Street. Good evening to our distinguished and honorable Michigan City Area School Board of Trustee members. First, I want to start off with a public service announcement. You know, this is for your teenagers, young adults, college students, those maybe who have a desire and a passion to be more up and mobile in life, like all of mine are. This is for Michigan City, Washington Park, lifeguards needed. This job pays thirty, almost thirty bucks an hour. I know Mary Perry put this in about four years ago. Require age sixteen and up. Must have a valid driver's license, must pass a drug screening, must pass a prerequisite swim test prior to hire, test date to be determined, must currently be a certified lifeguard or enrolled in a lifeguard class. The Valparaiso and the Port YMC are currently offering lifeguard classes. The applications will be picked up at City Hall at 100 East Michigan Boulevard, right across the street here at the Michigan City Fire Department's Administration Office and Training Center. It's right over here by the McDonald's. Go ahead and send them a message or contact them, 219-873-1400, extension 4004. That's our extension for our Public Information Officer at the Fire Department. She does a really great job. I want to congratulate all athletic and everybody at the Michigan City High School for these last three weeks, hosting the sectionals, regionals, and semi-state of the IHSA Boys' Basketball. Awesome job. I hope we get this every year. I mean, I attended all three rounds, unfortunately, you can't attend all. I just didn't have the time to go to them all. But yeah, that's a great thing. At semi-state, we brought in schools down in Muncie, over in the Bago Township, Elkhart area, the people from Gary, down in Manchester. That's just fantastic. Want to congratulate the leadership of the Michigan City. I see now the old Pine Elementary School on Pine 500 East, that's no longer in our hands. We sold it, it's under private ownership now. I know I complained about that to you about three years ago, so we're done with that, and good luck to the new owner on that. Well, I want to mention, we like to know our history. I know this month of April marks the sixth-year anniversary of Michigan City's designation by the National Civic League and looked major, featuring us as an All-America City back in 1965. And a lot of people... That was kind of Renaissance-type for Michigan City. It kind of goes with the 1966 Red Devils and the state championship. And I just want to mention that. And other than that, thank you very much, and y'all have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kalavich. Public forum is still open. Public forum is still open. Public forum is now closed. Thank you. Next on the agenda, the consent agenda. First item, or number one, approval of the minutes of proceeding meeting on February 25th, 2025. Number two, approval of employee appointments, resignations, retirements, leave, absence, disciplinary action, and status change. Number three, approval of secretary's report on bills to be paid. Number four, approval of pay dates for February 21st, 2025, and March 7th, 2025. Number five, travel reimbursement. Number six, facility requests. And number seven, affirmation of no finding of policy violation as stated in an independent investigator's report. How would the board like to proceed? I have a motion? And a second. Any further discussion? Seeing or further discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. That passes, Ms. D. Next is superintendent's information. Dr. McCollum.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Corley. Couple of reminders. This is the final week to turn in nominations for the Michigan City Area Schools' Wall of Fame, which honors former employees who have made lasting impact on our students. Nomination forms, a list of past recipients, and additional information are available on our website, educatemc.net/wof. The Wall of Fame recipients will be honored at the annual retirement dinner on May 28th. Another reminder, Michigan City Area Schools' spring break is March 31st through April 4th. I wish all of our staff... Wish you all and students a relaxing spring break as we recharge for a positive finish to the school year. Tonight, we are honored to recognize talented students from Barker Middle School, Krieger Middle School, and Michigan City High School, who recently competed in the Indiana State School Music Association's solo and ensemble competitions for band and chorus. These students dedicated their time and effort to prepare for the competition, and we are incredibly proud of their achievements. For a full update on their results, I encourage you to visit educatemc.net/McasNews. Now, I'd like to invite our band and choir teachers to share a few words about their students' accomplishments. To start us off first, please welcome Barker Choir teacher Stephanie Sabecki.
I got elected to go first, so here I am. And our kids are going to be singing, but I'm going to go ahead and do my little spiel about them right now, so that we don't waste too much time later. The students representing Barker Middle School this evening are Ireland White, come on up, Addison Silcox, Avea Berry, Cadence Brown, Harper Willis, and Mariah Meadows. All six received a gold rating for their small ensemble. And Ireland and Addison, raise your hands. Ireland and Addison both received individual gold medals, and Addison got a perfect score on hers. In addition, all six were a part of Circle the State with Song. Four of them who can raise their hands were selected for IMEA All-State Choir. And three of them are currently preparing solos for the Monday Musical Junior Competition in April. They are fun musical, talented, persevering, and great kids to be with every day, and I adore them all. They, on this kind of last-minute gig tonight, we thought everybody else was going to be singing and doing stuff, but it turns out it's just us. So they were willing to do this, and I'm very grateful for that. And I want to thank Megan Dorr for the invitation to do that. I would like you to please try to waylay their terrified selves while they are going to sing for you. This is a bit of an audience participation song, so you'll kind of know when to jump in. All right? So we're going to go ahead and sing a song for you tonight called "Every Night When the Sun Goes In." With our improvised sound system.
We'll start with the House of Mrs. Sabecki. Ireland, congratulations. Cadence, congratulations. And Harper.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, students, and Ms. Sabecki very much. Very awesome. And next, we will have Jason Smith, Shirley Allen, Catherine Martin, Michelle Howson, and Franklin Gass come up as well. In any order. We'll do the middle school first. What do you want to go ahead? Jason, lead us off.
All right. Hello, my name is Jason Smith. I'm the band director at Barker Middle School. Here, I've got two of my students that participated in a solo ensemble. I've got Peyton Gamble and Angel Byena. Why don't you come on up, bro? Two of the thirteen students that went to solo ensemble this year, these kids did a great job. Quick shout-out, Ms. Sabecki very graciously donated her time and played piano for almost all of the students this year. We could not do without her. But yeah, these students did a great job. They both got gold ratings at solo ensemble. These kids also just competed in organizational contests. Last weekend, we got a gold rating as a band. But yeah, lots of great things. Thank you again to the school board for having us here, and thank you very much.
Congratulations, guys. Thank you. Next, we have Shirley Allen coming on up.
Can you hear me? First of all, I want to thank Megan and Anne for putting this thing together with the certificates. Those are beautiful, and we're really blessed by that, so thank you, ladies. Okay, Krieger Middle School. We have eighth graders. First of all, I just want to say, it has been delightful. It is a delight working with these kids. I am really having such an enjoyable year with these chorus kids at Krieger. Right now, it's a little bit of a challenge, because, you know, I think we all are diving towards spring break, so they're acting a little bit squirrely. But I'm just delighted to work with them. Thank you, families, for supporting, for providing the transportation and all that that we need, you know, with all this extracurricular stuff that we do. So I just love the growth that we see musically and as individuals and as people. I just love it. So, all right, so we have eighth graders. Come on up when I say your name. Ms. Kalia Johnson. Ms. Jamarra Jackson. Ms. Aleah Parks. Mr. Xavier Roberts. Now, I'm trying to think who else I have. Raise your hand if you're from Krieger. I'm forgetting. I know I have, anywhere, eighth gr... Jonah Jones. No, because I just... You're not forget... You're not forgettable. So then, I think that's all the eighth grade, right, that I see? So then, we have two seventh graders. We're missing a couple tonight, but we have Mr. Anthony Patino. And Ms. Michaela Anderson. So cute. And they all performed solos. We had two other kids, too. They all performed solos. They all got a gold on their solo. Most of them did an ensemble. We got a gold in our ensemble. And it was just a beautiful day of learning and working through nerves and everything, so I'm just really proud of them. So here we are, Krieger Chorus.
Thanks, guys.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Catherine Martin from Krieger.
Hi, I'm the band director at Krieger Middle School. If I could have all my band students, please come up here with me. About half the students who performed this past month up here with me. I'll wait till they get settled, till I call out their names. We have Malik, Chloe, Mason, Aubrey, and Charlene. Round of applause for all of these incredible musicians. Not only did these students represent us incredibly well at the ISMA Solo and Ensemble event, they all participated in either a solo and ensemble. I want to make sure I'm right. Almost all of these students behind me here also went with the Krieger band to the ISMA Organizational, which is when the whole band goes together to perform. And we got, not only got a gold, this was the first time Krieger had gone in a very long time as a band staff. Ooh, spooky. We aren't even sure the last time when Krieger had gone, so it was a very big accomplishment for these kids to be a part of that vanguard going back to ISMA Organizational for the very first time, and I'm very proud of all of them here. Really proud. Thank you, Krieger band students.
Great job, everybody. All right, Ms. Howson. I see you making your way up this way up. Here you go.
I figured I was next. Can I have all the high school choir students join me up here who are here this evening real quick? So back in February, our high school choir students went, just like the middle school band and choir students, to ISMA District Contest. And we had a number of students this year who had done solos for the first time. We had a number of students who have done solos and ensembles for all four years of their high school career. We had seven soloists perform in Group One, which is the highest group you can perform in at the district competition. And those seven students got gold ratings at District, so then they qualified for the state competition, which was held in Indianapolis later in February. All seven of those students received gold ratings at the state competition. We also had an ensemble that performed at District in Group One and went to State and also received a gold rating. I should mention that two of our state soloists also received with distinction, which means that they only lost .5 or one point total from the judges, and they're judged at State by college music professors. So these are music professors who know exactly what they're looking for and things like that. So we did have, out of our seven soloists, two who received with distinction, and everyone else who went to State received a gold. Up here with me, I have Yona Seppies, I have Ashlyn Bright, Caitlin Ast, one of our distinguished state soloists, Jen Serrano, Avery Wingard, Hannah Parker, Naomi Williams, Emma Abraham... I'm going to turn this way. Maddie Perry, Ziana Molinar, Jasmine Ford, Tamira Gilliard, and Terrence McCray, also a big basketball player for us here at the high school. So it just proves, you can do sports and music at the same time. Congratulations to all of these students. Thank you for your hard work and dedication to our program.
Seppies.
She's all with you.
Congratulations. This is Jennifer... Ashlyn Bright? Saying that right? Awesome. Congratulations. Talia? Tamira? Jasmine? Congratulations, guys. That's awesome.
Smush.
All right, thanks, everybody. Congratulations. Come on down, Mr. Gass.
High school band, come on down. Just like the choir, we participated in solo and ensemble, District and State. We ended up having around thirty kids perform. We got a number of them here tonight, but there are definitely some conflicts tonight with scheduling. Within our... We had about thirty-two different performances at the district level, ten of those which made it to the state finals in Indianapolis. We had eight, seven, actually, no, eight gold performances, two silver performances at State. We had two perfect scores at State, including one in an ensemble. So it was a very awesome performance. A lot of these kids were also performing in things like our jazz band, which is out of gold, and will be going to contest, just like the choir will be, on April 25th to finish out our school year. So up here, we have some of our state kids and some of our regular district-level kids. We have Frank Anderson, who went to State on trombone sax. We have David Simons on trombone. We have Lexi Gresham on flute. We have Blake Oviette on alto saxophone. Ray Potter on clarinet. Ariana Lemmons on alto sax. Athena Roberts on oboe. Acacia Berry on clarinet. And last but not least, Josh Pratt, another one of our gold state performance on bass clarinet. So let's give a round of applause to all these kids.
All right. Timmy. Kozlowski? Okay. Acacia. All right, guys. Thanks. Great job.
So we'll take a brief, two-minute intermission. If anybody wanted to leave that was not planning to stay for the rest of the meeting, I know a lot of people might have came for your presentation, so if you're not going to stay for the rest of the meeting, we'll take two minutes to allow everybody to kind of clear out that you did not want to stay for the rest of the meeting. But you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting.
But you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Yeah, I think we're done.
All right, thank you, everybody. We'll now conclude the meeting. Dr. McCollum, you need to continue? Was that it for your?
Yeah.
Okay. You had Performance Services on you.
All right, thank you again, Mr. Corley. At this time, we're going to have Tony Kikekendell and Chris Garrity from Performance Services provide us with an update of the renovation and addition that took place at the CTE South Campus building. So at this time, Tony, it's all yours.
Thank you, Dr. McCollum. And I might need a little tutorial on this. This is pretty self-explanatory. Okay. I got it, we're good to go. And yeah, good evening, members of the board. I definitely want to thank you all for your time tonight. I was super excited. I thought we might be able to present with a huge audience. But it's okay, it's okay. I understand they got homework, my kids, same thing. So, yeah, I want to start. So more than two and a half years ago, your administrative team had a vision. And this vision was to look at an existing, kind of older building in the community to convert that facility and repurpose that into a state-of-the-art, early learning center and CTE campus. So we're here tonight to kind of share with you really how that vision has now become a reality. And I won't be as smooth on my transitions because I get used to this. But my name is Tony Kikekendall. I'm the Business Development Manager with Performance Services. And I'm joined here tonight by Chris Garrity, who's our principal architect, really was the lead on this project. And who's not here tonight is Pete Berger, who you've also seen in the past, but he's our project development engineer. We've kind of been the dedicated team for Michigan City Area Schools, really for the past ten years that our company has been working with the district. But this building was not constructed by just me and Chris. There was a few other people involved. Show up a little better. I really screwed it up. But I guess behind the scenes, just to let you all know, there's definitely a significant team that was involved on the architectural side, engineering side, and operations side to really bring this project to fruition. And what's important for me to kind of point out to you all on this is, this space, the Early Learning Center and kind of the CTE programs, these are very specific programs. Not that there's, you know, that the traditional classrooms aren't important and don't have their own challenges, these just have additional challenges, so we had to bring in the appropriate team members to help with that. So most importantly, I'm going to kind of turn this over to Chris Garrity, who's going to kind of walk you through the fun stuff, kind of the photos, and kind of how we got here.
All right, thank you, Tony. Good to see you, everybody, again. We do want to start, but I know we're celebrating the completion, but it's really important to understand where we came from first. So you see some of these original images, and it's really a testament to you as a school board and your administration to see a building that was once Brown Mackey College, the city judicial center temporarily, and an old food grocery store, and really seeing the vision of how that can be turned into something that's much more for the community. So as Tony mentioned, we started about just over two years ago doing some infrastructure work after the school had purchased the facility, so roofing. Then we got to working with Kathy Bildhouser on the Early Learning Center. So that was really exciting to get that program into your community and start to grow the new little wolves into big wolves and obviously the success that you see here earlier today. So our first phase started there, that has been completed for a while now. As we were working through the pre-K program, we were working into the CTE, which is, I think, a lot more of the images you're gonna see today. So you saw some of the images of what it was, now we can kind of look at where it became. So again, really proud of your school districts for seeing the vision of this building and really being able to transform it. We only had a small addition to pick up the automotive facility, just because some of the facilities, the lifts and the cars in there, really required a special construction, but otherwise trying to be good stewards and making sure we're keeping existing walls wherever we could. So there was a lot of vision that was behind the facility. So this is the site. All right. And then that's the program of what the building became. So five classrooms, we started with two and grew into five, new cafeteria, kitchen, playground, and then the Career Center. It's really seven programs that were able to be relocated to this new South Campus, as well as a professional development group. What's really interesting on the floor plan... There we go. Too much, sorry. Okay. It's just two buildings in one. You have your high school students in your CTE program, as well as the little kids there that really should not be interacting. So it was really interesting working together with your school district on how you can make this one facility safe for both. So we think that works pretty well. The purple in the center is the Little Wolves Early Learning Center with their playground up front, and then wrapping around it, starting with the yellow and the nursing program, the criminal justice, construction trades, automotive, welding, and advanced manufacturing. So each has their large lab, as well as a classroom space with that as well. So these are some of the images from the Early Learning Center. We wanted to make a large environment safe, but still inviting and engaging for the students. So thanks to David Williamson, help on some of the initial project, getting the playground equipment procured. So working together really closely with your administration, getting this moving very quickly to get it occupied. And just some more images of that playground. We know it was such an important piece for your community and for your students as well. Wanted to make it safe. Obviously, this is a parking lot out front, so how do you warm this up? How do you make this something that's, kids are happy to play in and they're not just playing in a parking lot? So the vision of your staff and administration has been gratefully grateful putting that together. And then inside the facility has their own dedicated cafeteria space, which can double as indoor play area, indoor learning space, as well as indoor classrooms, secure entries. I know it's not necessarily the prettiest always, but having their own restrooms, especially for the little kids, is very important, so having a, it's a really warm, inviting place for them as well. And then moving into the CTE, so once we completed the construction of the little walls, moved into the CTE program, so working very closely with David Notary and your staff on the design of these facilities and modernize them, again to Tony's point, these are very specialized places, so working very closely with them on what that could become. So these are your new nursing labs with a new restroom in it, so students can learn how to assist people into restrooms. Some more images of your modernized nursing labs. Criminal justice. Construction trades, and all of this is, it was in that existing facility. So able to modernize what was an old, at least one point, an Eagle Grocery Store. And then automotive, this was the only facility that needed to have a facility addition. We just needed the extra height there for the lifts, and then the thickness in the construction, the slab for the cars to drive onto. Each one of them has their own dedicated classrooms. We use some color coding in that as well. And you can see everyone has lockers, so really trying to give the students as much opportunity, a really comfortable learning environment that we can create for them. Welding programs, so this was able to support two welding programs in there, so two teachers, as well as classrooms. Then new advanced manufacturing, which has some really good technology and really cool equipment in there for your students to learn. Just more images of that advanced manufacturing. So it was really exciting. This is definitely a facility that your school district could be proud of, and what they've been able to come.
Thank you, Chris. And really, we want to share a lot of these photos. Many of you have probably been through there and been able to see them in person, but we want to share that with your community as well. I will say, you know, we've definitely been very appreciative of the school board giving us the opportunity to complete another project and serve your district. Also very thankful to the admin staff, and I definitely want to give a shout out to Dave Williamson, because day to day, as this facility was being built, there were curveballs, there was challenges. It's really nice to have somebody like him that worked really well, kind of with our operational staff, to help get this completed. So I think, kind of with that being said, I just want to say once again, it's been ten years, it's been a lot of fun. We look forward to the next opportunity to serve the district. If you have any questions, we'll stick around, but I know there's a lot on the agenda, but thank you all for your time tonight. We're very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again, Tony and Chris. As I'm looking, I had to look at my calendar, because I talked to Chris or Tony the other day, and that specific property, I have to thank also our economic development, Corporation Executive Director Clarence Hulse, who had a lot of conversation with Barbara, Ethan Watkins, our former superintendent, about that building. And Barbara would often come and speak to us about that building, and I know for sure, we were thinking, no, we don't want that building. We don't want that building. So then, fast forward, and I'm looking here at my calendar, March 16th, 2022, me, Dave Williamson, and Kevin McGuire had an opportunity to visit that site and started thinking through some of the opportunities and, of course, the vision that Barbara had in terms of marrying pre-K with CTE. So to now see what we have here three years later, once again, a special thanks to you all, special thanks to Dave for making this vision a reality for the Michigan City Area Schools. So wanted to make sure we had that backstory.
Thank you very much.
At this time, we go to the business section of the agenda. First item of business is Neola, second reading. I know Mr. Kaminsky's not here, but...
So yes, Mr. Kaminsky's not here, so Sarah will be presenting that item.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, board members, thank you. Tonight, we're bringing to you on second reading, Neola's update. It was brought to you on first reading in February. Mr. Kaminsky did ask if there were any questions, please contact him directly. At this time, we are asking for approval of Neola on second reading.
Thank you. Is there any questions by the board? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes, Miss D. Thank you, everyone. Next item of business is extension of retirement window for certified staff. Mrs. Painter.
Sorry, my coat keeps getting caught. Thank you again. So tonight, we are requesting the board's approval to extend the retirement window for certified teachers through the end of the '24-'25 school year. This is to accommodate any teachers who decide between now and the end of this school year to retire and still have access to the insurance benefits that are part of the collective bargaining agreement between the Michigan City Education Association and Michigan City Area Schools. This is an annual occurrence in which we extend the window. So again, administration is requesting the board approve the extension of the retirement window.
Any questions by the board? Seeing no question, it was a pleasure of the board.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Good, Mr. Gresham? Okay. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Miss D that passes. Thank you, board. And next, our fourth item on the business agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, third. I'm sorry, third, third, I'm sorry. Third item is the Newzella contract. Mrs. Bildhouser.
Thank you, good evening. Tonight, I'm asking the board's approval for the renewal of Newzella or Newzella, whichever way you prefer to pronounce it, it's really up for question. It's our supplemental reading platform for grades two to eight that provides additional supplemental resources for tier-one and tier-two instruction on a wide range of topics and reading levels, so it really fits under our diverse learners pillar as well. Thank you.
Any questions by the board? Just wanted to thank Mrs. Bildhouser for not leaving me up and hanging on the pronunciation, so thank you. Miss Gresham, you have a question?
Just quick, no significant changes to the contract?
No.
Thank you. Move to approve.
I have a motion. Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Miss D that passes. Thank you, board members. And our fourth item that was added to the agenda is approval of early literacy grant.
Good evening, board.
Oh, thank you.
The Indiana Department of Education has established an early literacy achievement grant through House Enrolled Act 1001-2023. This grant is to reward schools and teachers for improving students' foundational reading skills as evidenced by iRead3 data in an effort to support the statewide goal for ensuring a 95% passing rate. Indiana Department of Education has outlined the specific guidance on how school corporations can distribute these funds, as outlined below. The stipends to those that are responsible for implementation and delivery of literacy and reading instruction from kindergarten through grade three during the '23-'24 school year must be employed on the date of distribution. Stipends are not just for distribution to administrators or central office staff, and the distribution to be approved by the local governing body. Funds must be distributed by March 28th, 2025. Michigan City Area Schools has been awarded $62,610.19, and based on the criteria outlined, this has been distributed equally to approximately eighty-five staff members.
Thank you, Mrs. Fulton. Any questions for Mrs. Fulton? Seeing no questions, how would the board like to proceed?
Move to approve.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? That carries, Miss D. Thank you all again. That ends our business section. Now on to any board statements or issues requiring action prior to the next board meeting. Any statements or comments by the board members? Miss Gresham?
Two things I'd like to note. We had an amazing group of our high school and middle school kids up here for the arts, choir and band both. You are really seeing the product of a great level of cooperation between the different levels even. And, you know, we talk, especially in athletics, about feeder programs, where you learn these skills at a lower level, and then by the time you're at the high school level, you're ready for the big shot. And we're really seeing that happen across the band and choir programs between the two levels, so. And as many kids as you stuffed into this room, that's a tribute to how we're doing there with the level up for that, so. And then the other, the other note I wanted to send out was congratulations to everyone connected in our athletic department and everyone who works our big events. Our big three we hosted this year, Sectionals, Regionals, and Semi-State, went amazingly well. We got, we get such great feedback from all of these different schools that come from close and far away. I think our farthest this year was Wapahani, which is a high school just outside of Muncie, so that's probably a two-and-a-half-hour haul to get up here. They brought the whole town and just all kinds of compliments. Well, there was a few of those in the two-way game, so we enjoyed having lots of those schools up here, but a shout out to our acting athletic director and Sarah and everyone connected to those programs. They all do such an amazing job and make Michigan City and Michigan City Area Schools look so good to the public coming in from the outside, so thanks to them.
Thank you, Mr. Gresham. Any other comments?
I'd like to thank you for the work you did out there, and I know we kept you going on the playground, and it took us a while to get through everything that we were asking to make sure our kids were safe. And looking at it, yes, it is safe for our kids, and if you look at the opening picture of a parking space, big parking space, that we were gonna have to make sure our kids were safe if we do that in front. So it's just great. And David, I know I was there a couple times, and you were getting after them and keeping after them. And the classrooms and the things that we can do there as a district is just great, so thank you very much for your work.
Any other comments by any board members? All right, so start off, Dr. McCollum, thank you to your team for your continued guidance of leading us where we are now into our future endeavors. I look forward to it. I'm sure we have some things to share that we got to experience together, but I'm excited about the future of our school system like I've always been since I've been here for the last twelve, thirteen years. Anyway, also thank you to our staff. I know it's exciting, we coming up for the kids, it's... I know it's exciting, week coming up for the kids, it's spring break, I know my kids are ready, so, yeah, it's going to be a nice week. I'm sure my other job will be filled with many adventures for that week, but we are prepared, and again, I think our kids deserve this week off, and we're looking forward to it also, to get some different interactions with our kids during the day. Thank you to Performance Services, Tony and your team, thank you for the work you've done. When you said 10 years, I was like, wow, it's been that long, that we all have been working together on improvements in our schools and things for, so, thank you for your, again, thank you for those 10 years of hard work and making sure that, you know, we had a quality product presented and available for our students. Look forward to possibly working with you again in the near future. Mr. Williamson, thank you for, as long as I've been here, you have been like a rock around here. I know I've called you several times for things, if you answered the phone, which I was surprised, because I probably wouldn't have answered my phone, but again, you did your job, and again, thank you for your, just continue to be one of those people that, again, if we didn't have, we would understand why we needed you. So, again, thank you for that continued. Like Mr. Gresham was saying, I didn't get to partake in too much of the sectionals, regionals, or the semi-state, but I did hear the utterance of people who were from Michigan City and coming into town, and they're just pleased with what they had to, what they observed, the way they were treated throughout the time. So, again, it's always exciting. Every year, I say I'm going to make it over there, but my Saturdays are reserved for sleeping, so sometimes I'm partaking in that instead of making it. So, again, thank you. I would like to send a plug out to the Michigan City Area Schools. Over the, so many years of working in, not just in my full-time job, but in other capacities with other organizations, Michigan City Area Schools has always been there to surprise that support for outside organizations, and also best when it best suited our kids. So, if you're doing something in your organization and it suits our kids, the school system will bend over backwards for you to make sure that you have what you need to provide those resources to our kids. So, again, thank you all for that and for that, those continued supports. And I want to put a plug in for All Pro Dads. We are still going strong. We have six chapters going in our schools. We do have a meeting at Marsh, so if you are a Marsh dad or father figure, please bring your student to All Pro Dads. We meet at 7:45. Yes, I know it's early. If I can get up and get there, then I would like to see you all there. Our topic will be diligence, and we have a great topic, we have some great curriculum. So, again, if you are a dad or father figure at Marsh, on Thursday the 27th, we will have our meeting. But if you are a father at Edgewood, the second Tuesday of every month, we will have our meeting at 3:30. Excuse me, if you are a father at Knapp, the second Thursday of every month, we will have our meeting at 3:30. And if you are a father at Lake Hills, the third Tuesday of every, yeah, the third Tuesday of every month, we will have our own meeting at Lake Hills at 7:45. And if you are a father at Marsh, traditionally, our meeting's on the third Wednesday, but I had to change it due to some business. So, if you are a father or father figure at Marsh, we'll have our meetings the third, when I say third Wednesday of every month at Marsh. And then Springfield and Cool Spring, I don't know their schedule because they have other people running them, but if you are a father figure at Cool Spring and Springfield, please check and see when your All Pro Dad meetings are, so, thank you. That's it for the comments. Dr. McCollum, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I'd like to highlight a couple of items that two of you have already touched on. One, as a school district, student achievement is our ultimate goal, it's paramount to what we do. So, having an opportunity to have the boardroom filled with students who are demonstrating high achievement, that is very special and something that we know in Michigan City, we don't often celebrate. If there's anything that gets used in our district, we know it's generally not something that's positive. So, for us to bring students front and center and highlight that they're doing great things, and they're doing great things with the support of very talented teachers, that's something that I appreciate and thank Megan Dow and Ann for bringing to us tonight, and I look forward to continuing to do that at these meetings and very, and many other meetings, so that people know that Michigan City Area Schools, as a public school, is supporting and providing programming to our students that's going to help them reach the next level. And then also, once again, highlighting, there's always been a lot of conversation about pre-K and 14, or grade 14. So, for Michigan City Area Schools to demonstrate that we are pre-K to 14, which means that we have students that are reaching the next level, whether it's college or a trade, that we're graduating students who are college and career-ready. This building is a testament to that, and I look forward to us being able to have more Michigan City Area students take part in the program that we have at the CTE South Campus. So, I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of that, and also that we're going to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony on April 30th for that building, so another opportunity for Performance Services to highlight the work that they've done to increase student opportunities for our district and community. So, wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that, and have a happy spring break.
Thank you. Any other cabinet members have anything you'd like to say? All right, I just want to say, this is my actually first meeting in this year that I've been here in person, and I like the new look.
Yes, I know.
Thank you, Mr. D, for stepping in those times. All right, so, thank you all for attending, we adjourn our meeting, see you all next month.